Welcome. It's six o'clock and this is the regular meeting of the ISD 728 School Board. It's Monday, September 8th, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The first order of business is public comment tonight. And we have two speakers. And the first speaker will be Paula Benfer. Paula, welcome.
Thanks for listening to me once again. I have two concerns. And I gave you two pamphlets that I'm referring to. The first has to do with substituting in the school. And I listened to your action in August. And I just want to say that I've never been in a district or seen a district where board members substitute. I think board members can't substitute in a district they govern. And luckily, there are many districts near us. But what I've given you is six reasons or scenarios that explain why it could make a school feel a bit uncomfortable. And then fourteen ideas so that when you visit a school as a board member, you can communicate in a positive way. And it will be received by the staff and the community. The second thing I'd like to talk to you about is constantly I hear you saying academics and achievement. I too believe in reading, writing, English, history, government, math, and the sciences as foundational learning. But what you're failing to see is how electives and other areas, the curriculum, serve to keep kids in school to practice higher levels of thinking and use all of the ability that they have. I wrote from an art perspective because that's what I've taught all my life. I am not speaking for the staff that is here, that are your professionals. And I encourage you to get input from all of the curriculum areas and departments so that you can make wise decisions. Because I don't think the only measurement is data. And there are lots of good things happening in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Our second speaker tonight is Lisa Olson, our EREA rep. President, thank you.
Good evening. Hello, School Board members, Chair Anderson, and Superintendent Elmos. As you know, I'm Lisa Olson, a licensed teacher and representative of nearly 1,000 teachers in the district. We're excited to welcome many new teachers this year. They contribute enthusiasm, knowledge, a wide range of experiences, and deliver exceptional support to our students and families. We also welcome our new students, families, and colleagues. Our student, staff, and families have completed a strong first week in shiny and refreshed facilities with early childhood programming beginning today. Center-based special ed programming has also kicked off in our schools. And we're hopeful that the many hours of training and planning will produce great outcomes for our students. As our communities grow, change, and tackle new challenges together, we need the confidence of the board behind our students, our families, and staff alike. We appreciate the board's support in relying on community members to work towards finding solutions to growth in the South and the district's ability to address changing needs for our students with disabilities. Hearing from a variety of stakeholders is important. And the facility's community task force is one place to have that happen. This Thursday is the first two-hour meeting with eight more meetings, excuse me, eight hours more of meetings following that. This is a huge commitment from our caring community. And I've seen previous groups take on this type of work with much intention. As we progress further into the Read Act, our teachers are committed to the ongoing improvement in academics and achievement for all of our students. But our teachers have questions. Questions about practices that have been directed for our secondary English teachers. On behalf of secondary English teachers, last Wednesday, I asked district administration for a meeting in the name of understanding. And we hope they agree to that request. It seems as if community members are getting responses from district officials and board members, which teachers also deserve. Our teachers also value increased efforts to support our students socially and emotionally. As the Annunciation School community suffered such a terrible tragedy recently, no one wants that to happen again. We know the district and school board take very seriously the work of safety in our schools and ask that you remain vigilant in planning for safe schools and responding to concerns. Our teachers acknowledge and thank the dedication of board members during September's School Board Recognition Month as you spend countless hours listening to staff, students, and community so that we can be partners in making ISD 728 stronger than ever. The year ahead holds so much promise. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lisa. Next on the agenda is General Reports. Superintendent Elmos.
Well, good evening, board members. A few updates on my report. It's linked there for you to look through. First of all, I just want to extend a thank you as September rolls on with School Board Recognition Month. There's very few folks that understand what it's like to be on a school board. And so I thank you for your work and your dedication. And on behalf of our administrative team, thanks for doing what you do on behalf of the district every day. So excited to recognize all of you in the month of September. Welcome to our new leaders, is in my report. You're going to hear from our executive cabinet tonight welcoming a few new leaders. Some of them cannot be with us tonight. But really excited to have the level of competency that we got in our new leaders. And so, super exciting. The board should feel very assured in the pool of candidates that we got for these positions and the level of experience and knowledge that they bring to do good things for kids and families. So excited to welcome those leaders into our district tonight. And you're going to hear more about that. Very quickly, on opening day enrollment numbers. We opened our doors with 14,582 students. Just to give you a little context, last year we opened our doors with 14,320 students. So 262 students more than last year. The vast majority, I mean, the vast majority, 95% are in the southern end of our district, our elementary schools, middle and high schools. So just so you know that the trend is continuing. That's where the growth is coming from. No surprise there. So excited to have more students, excited to have the conversations with our buildings about what that means for all our teachers and our kids and families. So as we kicked off another school year, I was very proud and excited of our staff, of our students, for kicking off a year so positively. I mean, we get to set the tone for what starts the year. And our teachers and our staff did just an amazing job, having our kids ready with routines. I just want the board to know and understand what goes into kicking off a school year. In public education, we spend a lot of time starting and stopping, right? And so kicking off another school year is no small feat. And our staff did it really, really well. So huge thank you for that. And I hope that you feel proud as a board of the work that was done to kind of get us going with that. Two last updates for you. The levy process tonight, Executive Director Regan will be up here talking about the levy shortly. I had just a few comments in my report about the kind of what's coming up in September with the levy. And this is the time where districts typically certify the maximum when they set the preliminary levy. So Executive Director is going to talk a little bit more about that coming up. But there's a little background about why we do that and why districts across the state and the country do that. And last but not least, as a reminder, Chair Anderson and I, every time we meet to set these agendas, we have an annual calendar of board topics. If you haven't reviewed that yet, please do. If you have feedback for us, please send it our way. Because we do continue to talk about what does the entire year look like for board meetings and work sessions. And that input is very valuable. So please send that our way. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
As long as I remember, we've been the eighth largest district. At what point do we move to six or seven?
Yeah, we do talk about that. It's going to be a while. I think we'd have to be over 15,000 for that happens. So yeah, it'll be a little while yet.
Any other, any other questions? Sorry. Got something in my throat. It choked me up, I guess. How we're doing. So it's awesome. So thank you so much, Superintendent Elmos, for that update. We've started the year really well. And so thank you to the administration and all the staff workers for what you're doing. It was really fun to see. I was at Zimmerman High School, greeting students as they come in the door. And a lot of excited faces and a great start to the school year. A special shout out to our SROs that keep our students and our staff safe. So thank you for the work that you're doing. Moving on now into the agenda, we have the Executive Cabinet Report and introduction of new district leaders. We welcome Dr. Carrie Rock and Jamie Nord and Ms. Shannon Blair Olson, our Assistant Superintendents and our Director of HR.
Good evening, Chair Anderson, Superintendent Elmos, and members of the board. Can you hear me okay? Okay. We are so pleased to report that we are off to an outstanding start to the new school year. This positive launch is a testament to the tremendous effort that you heard about this evening and collaboration of our entire school community. We want to extend our deepest gratitude to our dedicated educators, our supportive families, and of course, our incredible students for their hard work and enthusiasm. Nothing beats the buzz of our buildings the first week of school. Tonight, it is my honor to introduce the new leaders who have joined ISD 728. While a few are unable to be with us tonight due to prior commitments, we are excited to welcome them all to the team. Starting with Carrie Ralph. Carrie is joining us from the Anoka Hennepin School District, where she recently served as a Special Education Administrator. She has been selected to serve as a Special Education Coordinator for us. And we couldn't be more excited to welcome her to our team. She is going to be supporting at Vandenberg Middle School, Ivan Sand, and our focus program. She has served as a special ed teacher in her past, leader within specialized programming, and as a special ed administrator. She is known for her collaborative approach and dedication to ensuring students with disabilities have the resources and opportunities they need to succeed. Carrie is eager to partner with staff and families to strengthen supports across the programs that she will be supporting. Welcome, Carrie. Next, we have Adrian Lewis. She is unable to join us this evening. But she is also joining our special education team as a coordinator and will be supporting Prairie View Middle School, Rogers Middle School, Rogers High School, and Online 728. She brings a strong background in special education as both a teacher and instructional leader with extensive experience supporting students across different grade levels. Most recently, Adrian served as a Special Education Administrator. She's committed to building strong partnerships with educators and families to foster inclusive learning environments. She's excited to contribute her expertise. And if you have the chance to meet her energy she's bringing to the 728 community is infectious. Next, we have Tony Alberts. He is our principal at Hassan Elementary. He joins us with over 20 years of experience in education, having served as a teacher, instructional leader, and most recently, as a principal in a neighboring district. Tony is passionate about creating a school culture where students, staff, and families feel valued and supported. He looks forward to continuing Hassan's tradition of academic excellence and community connection. He is unable to join us this evening because he is busy coaching his son's football team. I'm going to turn it over to Shannon Blair Olson to introduce a new member of her team.
Thank you, Jamie. I am so excited to have welcomed Michelle Carroll to our HR team these last few months. Michelle has quite an interesting background. She actually started in food service. She has a Bachelor of Science in Nutrition Science from the U of M and a Master's in Human Resources and Industrial Relations from the Carlson School of Management. Michelle spent 14 years in her various roles in food nutrition and then has spent 10 years in HR. She came to us from Inver Grove Heights, where she served as the Director of HR for eight years. I am absolutely thrilled. She's been a wonderful addition to our team. And I'm thrilled to welcome her. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you. All right. So I am also really excited to tell you how HR has started the year. We have had just a wonderful start to the year. We onboarded, as an HR team, 90 teachers that were replacement and new teachers, 90, and dozens of nonlicensed staff members. And it was a very busy summer, but our HR team just rose to the occasion. We actually, and when you listen to these numbers, it's, I'm just so proud of our team and what they've been able to do along with the hiring managers for our buildings. We actually have less than 20 openings, nonlicensed staff openings, out of our approximately 1,400 nonlicensed staff positions. And when it comes to our teachers, we have 7.66 FTE unfilled, which is out of our 973.45 FTE of teachers. That is less than three-quarters of 1% of unfilled positions in the district, which is just an incredible number. We have, these are very small FTE positions. Some of them are .15, some of them are .2. So they're really hard to fill positions. So we're doing our best. But 7.66 FTE total unfilled is just a really great testament to our HR team. I'm very proud of them. I also wanted to bring to your attention two legislative changes in HR that are starting on January 1st of 2026, both of these. One is the Paid Family Medical Leave Act. Starting on January 1st, Minnesota is implementing a new program that's going to require employers to provide paid leave to employees for certain types of leave. For example, serious health conditions, bonding leave, care of a loved one with a serious health condition, safety leave, or to support family members on military leave. This is a partial wage replacement program, meaning that paid leave benefits are calculated based on an employee's weekly pay. The state is actually administering this program. It's going to be run similarly to unemployment, where this employee will apply directly to the state for this program and for these benefits. And also that the employee and the employer will contribute to pay a portion of the tax to fund this program. This, even though the state is administering this program, this is going to result in some significant additional administrative work for the HR department. For example, we've got to decipher whether an employee is going to go with the state paid leave program or use their contractual or other benefits available to them through our school district. We also have to figure out how everything's going to interact with existing laws like E S S T, existing FMLA, and other contractual provisions for each contract. We're still awaiting a lot of guidance from the state on this, even though it's only a few months away. But we, this is another one of those unfunded mandates that is a state law that doesn't really provide us any additional resources. So we're looking forward to tackling that challenge in the HR department. Also, there's a new break law starting January 1st. There's a couple of amendments to the existing meal and rest break requirements. An employer must, excuse me, an employer must allow a paid rest break for nonexempt employees of 15 minutes for every four consecutive hours of work. You can, as I stated, this is for nonexempt employees. So this does not apply to teachers, but it does apply to many of our other staff members. For employees, also for employees working six or more consecutive hours, we must allow an unpaid meal break of 30 minutes. And this is a change from the current requirements where employees working eight or more hours are just allowed sufficient time to eat a meal. There was no 30 minutes or time allotment under the existing law. There are penalties if we don't comply with these new laws. So we are going to have a challenge of making sure that our principals and other administrators are scheduling our staff appropriately so that they're not missing their timed meal and rest breaks. I will stand for questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the updates. And welcome to all the new staff members.
Chair Anderson, fellow board members, Superintendent Elmos, thank you for the opportunity to give the update on business services. We kind of straddled the line of like, kids show up, we do a lot of work, and kids aren't here, and we do a lot of work. So we're going to give you an update on what that whole thing looks like. So we have construction projects. We have the 10-year referendum and some LTFM work that takes place every summer. First one being Elk River High School had two things done. Phase two of the auditorium, which is the technology and sound, was completed. It's beautiful in there because of what they did in phase one. And now it sounds even better to match what we did look-wise. So that's pretty cool. And then we had three of our four chillers replaced this summer. Rogers Middle School, as Superintendent Elmos talked about, that's where our growth is, is in Rogers and on Seago. We've taken spaces and repurposed them into classrooms and breakout spaces. So we've just better use that facility. It looks beautiful in there. And they were planning out how the kids are going to navigate it. So it's a lot of work to get that done, and that's pretty cool. Rogers Elementary was phase two. So they did a major remodel in there over two summers. The beautiful point right now is when you walk into the media center, it's amazing. Like, that's one heck of a library. And that's a pretty cool thing for those kids and families to have and be part of. Zimmerman Middle High School, if you haven't driven by it, you may notice that, like, it's all different. I couldn't tell you what it looked like before. But the stadium entrance, the parking lot, and the fields all look amazing. And that has gotten completed, and it looks pretty good. Vandenberg Middle School and Lincoln Elementary had some window and entryway work done. For the most part, it's done. Lincoln is almost done. It'll be done in the next week or two, so that's good to hear. And then I think the shining jewel, which you guys saw in the report, was Meadow Vale. I think I said it right. Meadow Vale Elementary and the playground. That is one heck of a playground. And a lot of work went into making that happen and to be open for the kids to play on it. I stopped by last week. They enjoyed it. There was no four squares, no football, no anything besides playing on that playground. So the investment goes a long way in those kids having that fun. Budget, oh, man. It always seems to be budget season. But right now, what we're doing is wrapping up last year. So we, as a district, always are kind of in three fiscal years. We're wrapping up fiscal year '25. We are in fiscal year '26, and we're starting to plan for '27. So that's kind of the navigation we have at all points. The audit is in process. The auditors walk in next week. So they'll spend a week here doing work to get everything to where it needs to be. There's always follow-up that goes into that. But that gives us our final numbers when we get done with that audit process for when we make decisions and plan for October and November for what it looks like next year. So it's always a moving target. I shouldn't say that. It's not always a moving target. Stuff is always coming and happening, allowing us to make decisions that we can when we get there. '25 paid, '26 levy, you guys are going to have to hold on. That excitement is going to come later. I know everybody loves to hear about taxes, but we're going to talk about that. Food service. We feed 3,000 kids a day breakfast and 10,000-plus kids a day lunch in 17 kitchens. It is absolutely amazing. The ladies are smiling every moment that they do it, and the kids enjoy it. I think, like, my kid is new to the district. I'll tell you what, he's pretty happy that he walks in and gets multiple choices and always has pizza to fall back on. So as a big fan of school lunch, I'm excited to get out there and sample it and have it be a good thing. So it's a really shout out to that crew that's a lot of mouths to feed every day and every week and all year. Finally, we have transportation. We have 15,880 kids in our system that have the option to transport. We schedule and route 10,000-plus of them. Think about that. 10,000 kids, we got to put on buses and take home every day. We got to navigate the neighborhoods. We got to navigate the traffic. We got to navigate all of it. So the investment that the board allowed the district to make into opt-out transportation has allowed this year to be a much smoother rollout. It was not perfect, but it gets better and better every year when we have the opportunity to have families opt out. So we know where all 10,000-plus of those kids are at, what they're supposed to do. And now we just get to make sure that we get it dialed in based on what we know or don't know or changes we haven't heard yet. So it's a much smoother thing. I appreciate that. I think the other three groups that are the silent partners in this that don't really get much credit when we start school is IT. The fact that we have all this and we run means they're doing their job. So there's a credit to Joe and his team. They do an amazing job. Custodians do a lot of work to clean up before that construction and through the summer. When you walk into those buildings, they're beautiful, and they do a great job making sure that happens. And then finally, purchasing. They buy it all, and they make it all show up where it needs to be. So our center-based move had a lot of move of stuff in it. They did most of that moving of stuff and making sure it happened. So credit to the whole group because they make it all happen so when those kids walk in, the next two's work can make sure that they're educated. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks so much for the update.
I'm going to kick off our Educational Services Department update for you. Our Educational Services Department has been busy preparing for the new year long before students arrived through our building doors. We offered a vast array of professional learning opportunities for educators already starting in June. They hit the ground running. They hit the ground running with some center-based trainings in June and some different opportunities, and then we followed up in August with a lot of different offerings. So as I mentioned, in preparation for the launch of our center-based programming, we provided special educators-related service providers, assistants, and administrators training in June and July. This training, from what we have heard from staff, was really critical in equipping them with the skills and knowledge they need to feel ready to start the year in our new spaces for students. We also did a lot of work in getting those new spaces ready and set up for our students to come through the doors. So we were thrilled to welcome students into the programs last week. I had an opportunity to go out and see a lot of the programs in action and visit with our educators and assistants. Things are going well. I want to assure you of that, but as we've talked about many times before, when you start programs like this, there are going to be bumps in the road. And so we're trying to be out there, be encouraging, let educators know that even if it maybe hasn't been the smoothest day with a particular student or group of students, that that's anticipated and that it will take some time to really stabilize. We know that when students are in transition, some of them switch buildings altogether, that that can be really challenging for them, and our staff have just been doing an exceptional job of navigating, supporting the students and the families with that change. Regarding the READ Act, we are continuing to provide professional learning to our phase-one educators with the OLA. We've begun year two of implementing functional phonics and morphology in our elementary schools, and our focus this year, while it will continue to be implementation of that new resource, will also be on enhancing our use of our benchmark resource, which is the other portion of our literacy block. So we're providing our educators with some additional professional learning on using the benchmark resource, focusing our coaching visits on that, and our instructional rounds with principals. Additionally, we'll, we're already starting conducting our fall screening, which is how we identify students who might be in need of a little bit more support. So we'll be having conferences coming up with parents and being able to share whether or not their student needs some of that supplemental support. And we're excited at the secondary level to share with you that we're enhancing our literacy intervention offerings for middle school students this year, and one of our high schools is also piloting intervention program for literacy as well. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rock to give you the other updates.
Good evening. You have probably heard us talk over the last three, two years about the math curriculum pilot. So we are excited to share that we are actually at the stage where we're piloting new materials. So last Tuesday, I got to spend time with our high school educators as they learned about one of the curriculums we're piloting. And so if you have high school students, you might see some new materials in the classroom that they're piloting right now. And then next week, our elementary teachers who are piloting curriculum and our middle school teachers who are piloting curriculum will go through training with two of those new resources. So we are, like I said, three years into this process, and we are excited to have new materials in the hands of our teachers as we look to select new materials. Last spring is when the state approved the new standards for mathematics, and so this is like the perfect time for us to be piloting materials as it will align perfectly with that implementation. So more to come on math, but you will be seeing some new materials, and we'll be updating you along the way with that. Also, new in educational services, and I believe we've given you an update on this as well, is the direct admissions pilot. So this is a program that all of our high schools are participating in, which is a state program called direct admissions, and it's for high school seniors, and it allows them to look at fifty-five state post-secondary options, and it will streamline the admissions process for them and actually allow them to apply to fifty-five, any of the fifty-five options that they're interested in for free. So if you have a high school student who, like I did last year, who is looking at options in the state of Minnesota, you know how expensive that can be as they're looking at options for post-secondary options, both trade schools, community colleges, and four-year universities. This program allows them to apply to any of those for free. And so we will be participating at all of our schools in that. And basically, what happens is they will receive a letter if they choose to participate. They will get to choose the ones that they want to apply to, and we will send them their information, and then they will get an acceptance letter back. So it's a great program that the state is offering and really streamlines the process for students and families. So we're really excited about that for our, our students, and there'll be more information to come from both the high schools, and we'll put it on our website. It's, it's just such a great resource for our, our families. And then finally, I just wanted to share with the board and our community that we are going to be working with our high school leadership to really examine our college credit opportunities that our high schools are offering. So one of the exciting things that we have, that we want to share is that over the last four years, we have increased the number of students that have passed the advanced placement assessments. Students who take advanced placement courses take an advanced placement test at the end of those courses to earn college credit. So in two thousand twenty-two, sixty-seven percent of the students who took those assessments earned a three or better on that. When you earn a three, a four, or a five on that assessment, you typically get college credit in that course when you go to your college. This year, our students who took those assessments, seventy-six percent of the students earned a three or better. So we're really excited about that growth and student achievement in those advanced placement courses. So one of the things high school leadership and I are working on is providing more opportunities for our students to earn college credit while they're in high school, because when you earn college credit in high school, then you don't have to pay for that when you go to college, which we know is a great opportunity for our students. And there are so many opportunities for that that we can leverage while they come to school here in ISD seven twenty-eight. So we'll be updating the board about that along the way this school year as well. And with that, Assistant Superintendent Norah and I will stand for questions.
Any questions from the board?
I just want to say, Superintendent Almos, cabinet members, thank you for your leadership, and to all ISD seven twenty-eight employees and volunteers, thank you. It's amazing what you guys do to educate our students, and it's just awesome. So thank you to everybody that helps do that.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. It really does make a difference, you know, all the little things. I was thinking, as John Regan mentioned, you know, the opt-out at busing. When sometimes you're home and school's about to start, this happened to us a few years ago, I'd go to the wife, "Did you schedule busing? No, I thought you did." And then you're driving your student for the first few days because you forgot that little detail. So it's nice that it defaults to pickups. So it's a, little things like that make a big deal, and thank you so much for the updates, and glad to hear that things are going so smooth. Moving on now, we're going to go to school board member reports, committees, Director Steinbrecker, facilities.
So not much to update here. We have our next meeting in October. Basically, the committee is working on Level Four options that we'll work through and bring back to the board. Excited for our first task for, to, excuse me, task force meeting this Thursday, so we're excited for that. Board members, there is a sign-up in Superintendent Almos' weekly update, so make sure you get on that so you can be part of those and kind of see the process.
Any questions for Director Steinbrecker? Okay, moving on to policy. We have several policies that are up for approval tonight. They're on their second reading. And then we have some policies that are from the policy committee for the first reading. And what you can see there is there's some minor changes, usually MSBA updates. For example, we added some definitions into six oh four. One of the things we want to do is kind of policies use terms that are not defined, you know, to add some clarification on the definition side. But other than that, these are all MSBA standard updates to the policies. And we have a policy meeting September fifteenth.
Finish the reports.
Yes. Yep. So anyways, that's, that's what's going on with the policy committee. Any questions on that?
I, I was just going to add a little bit to five oh six, since that had been delayed for a little bit, and that's up for a first reading, just so the full board knows, because there's been a lot of discussions behind, behind the scenes on this. So five oh six is the student discipline policy. You'll notice when you see it's up for its first reading now, so we have time between the next one for feedback from everyone. But you'll notice there's been no significant changes. We implemented the changes from the MSBA on legal changes that were required on not having a student in a prone position or, or anything that could suffocate them. As everyone knows, I had, or maybe they don't, but I had put a, a bunch of work into updating this policy and then pulled back some of the changes on that, so you won't see any of those changes in there. And the reason behind that is, is through our discussion, it wasn't that we aren't seeing discipline as something that we can improve or work on. It is still my belief, and I'm passionate, that if we don't have teachers that feel safe and students feel safe, they can't learn. So it's one of my very top priorities, and I still want to go to war on discipline. We need to do that. But it doesn't need to be done in policy. I agree with that. So what we're doing is talking about that in goals now, so that's why we had that discussion is, is if that's, how can we direct that improvement through the board goals and the administration side, right? So it doesn't have to be done in policy, we can accomplish it through administration. So having said that, this is a unique policy because it does require us to approve the administrative procedures, which we talked a little bit about in the policy committee meeting. So it's under two sections there where the, they're supposed to be attached as an addendum to this, and the reason being, just so we are aware of what's going on and how the policy is being implemented, right? So if we could, and it's been a busy first week of school, so I understand. But before the second reading, if we could attach those, that would be great.
Just a point of clarification. I think, as we talked about in that committee, it was the policy ties back to our student handbooks. So as a reference to the student handbooks, that's probably how we would queue that up if that's agreeable to the board.
Attach the student handbook to the policy?
Yeah, or link, or however we do it. Yep. That would be the procedure side of that.
We could probably add, the student handbook outlines discipline, correct?
Correct.
So we could put links into the physical document of the policy that would link to the handbooks.
And essentially, we have two disciplines in handbooks, one for elementary and one for secondary, correct?
Correct. Yep. So I think just to emphasize the point, we're not changing a procedure. It's really using what we have in place at this point. Yep.
Yep.
And there's no different choices, or it's all the same throughout the district?
The handbooks do give some discretion to make decisions to, to teachers and to administrators, and I think that's really important, depending on the escalation and, and depending on what the, in the particular issue that's happening, right? We would want people to have the flexibility to skip a step or to, you know, or to do those things when it's necessary for each kid.
Okay. So we'll be able to know, like, down to the school or just different?
Well, I think what you're saying is the implement, the handbook is the same across all the district, but there's a, a portion within there where there is some flexibility for the staff to make decisions, and that's consistent across, but what that decision is, is based on the unique circumstance.
And I think to clarify, we spent quite a bit of time on policy five oh six in the committee meeting, and we looked at all the changes Director Nordos had, and many of those changes were already being implemented, you know, with current operating procedures and that. So the necessity for change wasn't necessarily there right now, so that might be looked at in the future, but I think the emphasis was to ensure that we have a solid discipline practice in place with anti-bullying provisions, and I think we spent quite a bit of time on that, and I think we walked away as a committee fairly satisfied that things were being implemented and taken care of. Director Steinbrecker, do you have any comments on that?
So I wasn't at the last policy meeting, but I did get an update from you, and that was my understanding as well.
Good. Any other questions?
Are we just doing the first reading?
Are we finishing our board updates, or?
Well, we're finishing our board updates, yes. I was just mentioning that those were on the first reading. So moving on then, we go to the appointments. The Northwest Suburban Integration School District with Vice Chair Freiberg.
Again, there is no update or report. We have our next meeting, I believe it's next Wednesday.
Okay. And then the Minnesota State High School League with Director Weiss.
Nothing, no new updates directly from the high school league. Their, their next update's probably coming out the next week or so as well. However, I just want to make note that all of the fall activities are in full swing. Football and volleyball and soccer is, all of the sports are up and running, and many of the musical and theatrical programs are starting to get on board as well, so exciting things there. Winter activities will already be opening up registrations next month, so look for that as well as a lot of meetings as relates to that. And I got a little extra bonus opportunity to, to observe our RHS cheer and dance teams at the Gopher game on Saturday. It was, it was high school band cheer and dance representation day, so it was really, really cool to see multiple schools all coming together with the Gophers, the Gophers Marching Band, the Gophers Dance Line, the Gophers Cheerleaders, and, and all perform together at halftime. So it was, it was colorful, and it was musical, and it was, it was awesome. So it was really good to see Rogers High School representing both their cheer and their dance, fall dance team. So that was a little bonus for me when I was down there.
Cool. Any comments or questions for Director Weiss? If not, let's move on to Association of Metropolitan School Districts. I think Director Madsen, you have an update for us?
Yes. We had, our last director's meeting was on Friday, September fifth, and the executive directors' report, we talked about the survey results for their upcoming twenty-twenty-six legislative platform, and some of those topics that were voted on or involved in the survey included the MCAs, safety and discipline, funding, local control, unemployment, special education, and also no new mandates, especially the unfunded mandates. And there's also been talk that there might be a special session coming up after the recent tragic event that happened in Minneapolis. Governor Walz indicated he would call a special session to have lawmakers vote on his gun control proposal, but there is currently no agreement on the agenda with the Republican leadership. The House Republicans released their own school safety agenda for a special session last week, and the two sides have significant differences to overcome, and so we are unsure if the special session will actually occur before twenty-twenty-six. And then Director Hamlin is now going to share about the AMSD special guest.
In September, at the AMSD meeting, we hear from the Morris Leatherman Company, as Leatherman Company, as they report on a Minnesota public opinion survey. Many questions are about schools, and some are about statewide politics and how our legislators and governor are doing. Many of the questions were broken down by overall responses, metro area, and then parent responses. In the interest of time, I'm just going to highlight some overall responses. Some notable results included, sixty-four percent of folks feel Minnesota is headed in the right direction, while twenty-nine percent say no. Thirty-five percent feel the US is headed in the right direction, while fifty-seven percent say no. Of those surveyed, forty-four percent identified as Democrat, thirty-eight percent Republican, fifteen percent independent, and three percent were other. Thirty-eight percent of folks feel their property taxes have gone up because of their city or township. Thirty percent feel it's because of their local school district. Twenty-three percent feel it's their county, and ten percent are, they say something else or they're unsure. Overall, just fifty percent of people feel public education has declined in the past three years, while twenty-two percent say it's improved, and twenty-three percent say it stayed the same. Sixty percent of people feel their local schools are not adequately funded, while thirty-six percent say differently, and that's a decrease of seven percent over last year. Fifty percent support a one percent income tax increase to cut school property taxes by fifty percent, while twenty-eight percent oppose, and ten strongly, ten percent strongly support. Overall, seventy-three percent feel schools are doing what's right for kids versus twenty-two percent who feel otherwise. Only twenty-two percent of folks feel schools are not focused on the basics. Overall, thirty percent of those surveyed were very concerned about MCA scores, while forty-three percent are not, and twenty-seven percent are somewhat concerned. Fifty-seven percent feel the MCAs accurately represent achievement, and thirty-six percent feel that test does not accurately represent achievement. Overall, fifty-one percent support replacing the MCAs with the ACT, and forty-one percent oppose. Sixty-four percent feel they have the right amount of say in their child's education. Fifty-eight percent of people surveyed trust teachers' unions. Twenty-three percent of folks are very concerned about the amount of screen time in schools. Thirty percent are somewhat concerned, twenty-nine are not concerned, and fifteen percent are not concerned at all. And finally, eighty-one percent feel providing free breakfast And finally, 81% feel providing free breakfast and lunch is a good idea, while just 15% say it's a bad idea, and 4% are unsure. That's a really quick synopsis of about an hour and a half of information.
Repeat that?
And then, if I could add, when we were getting all of those facts and data about the survey, it was really interesting, and then Sarah and I even mentioned how it might be neat to maybe look at some of those survey questions for our own survey in the future.
Sure.
Can we get the board, get a copy of what you have for that? Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? One of the things I forgot to mention is the superintendent evaluation, Director Weiss.
Yeah, it's just not numbered at the, at the top, so it's, it kind of gets lost in there each month. But, but as far as updates to that, we are meeting as a committee again this week to discuss board goals. There have been multiple variations and feedback related to that, so we'll, we'll get together, we'll take all that in consideration, and provide a new, a new copy representing, like, you know, a lot of the feedback that we've received, both in conversation and in email, to bring back another version for review to the board prior to October's meetings. And then, I'll just move on to advocacy and board development. There is a link to a sheet for board members to review and look at opportunities for district engagement, so thank you to administrative staff and whoever's putting all those events in there, but it does range widely from, you know, various, you know, links to athletic events, to the job fairs and mentors and, and sing-alongs, and all the things that are happening at all the levels of our schools, so schools across the district. So take a look at that, look at ways to engage throughout the year as, as more things get added. The dates for MSBA and COSBA have been released, so MSBA conference will be January 15th through 16th. Please confirm with Londa by the end of the month if you can make that. Again, the sheet was linked in the, in the board update, and then the COSBA event, the national, will be in Louisville this year, March 13th through 15th, so let her know about that as well. And then there's various MSBA trainings that are now coming back available, both in person and virtual, so if there's any level two, threes, or fours anybody needs to take or wants to refresh, feel free to sign up for those, and Londa will help you with that as well.
Any questions for Director Weiss? Well, moving on to governance, the first reading, the policies, you can see there that we have several policies for the first reading. Any questions or comments on those? Not, we'll go to the oafs.
Yes, I do have one. On 603, I was wondering if you, the committee had discussed at all about putting term limits or, for the district advisory committee?
No, that was not discussed at the policy committee.
So they're just, they could be on there forever? Yeah?
I mean, right now, there is no term limit for the...
Could we, would you consider adding one? Because I was looking that, you know, a lot of them, we don't have to copy, but some districts out there have it go for two, three years. Maybe you could renew it once, and then you get new people in.
What we could do is go ahead and, you could, you could submit a draft of, of changes and submit that to the committee, and we can look at it.
Okay.
So the reason it wasn't discussed is the actual policy doesn't outline that, that's, it just says the administration will take care of it, so we had to get more information later. I hadn't thought of the question. So once you posed it, it, it made sense. So when I looked over the way we do it with 15 members, and when one leaves, we open it up to an application, it would make sense that there's like, an application process. So not that there's a term limit where someone can't serve multiple times, but, you know, maybe after five years or whatever, they would open it up to reapply. And you could select the same person again, but at least that would open up opportunities to other people as well, instead of just like, once you're in, you're in forever to this type of position. So I would agree with looking at that. The other discussion we could have is, do we do that, and we could do that in administrative or policy, and either one might work, so. But I, I agree with what you're saying.
And I would say that you want to be careful that you don't have too much turnover in that committee, otherwise you're, you know, a lot of that, you're going back and reteaching the process. You want to have a healthy amount of turnover if you're going to do that. If, if the board is interested, we, you know, I can get you some information about what kind of turnover we've had in the past. You may not need a term limit if we've had significant turnover and significant changes on that over time. I'm guessing that's probably why we don't have a term limit at this time.
I would be interested in that information. That seems like a logical next step.
Yep, that would be great, and I'll submit edits then for that. I do think it's important to open it up for other people, and maybe not all at once or anything, but do it strategically. That'd be great.
Sure, just bring those to the, you can send them to myself and Superintendent Almos, draft changes, and we can talk about it at our next policy committee meeting.
Can I clarify?
Yes.
So are we sending this back to policy committee, or are we continuing with the first and second reading, and just how are we handling it?
Well, right now, there's no proposed changes to the policy, so it would continue on unless the policy committee held it back and then put it back to a first read again with new changes.
That's what I was clarifying for Director Freiberg, is so, we're going to continue on.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, we'll move to the second reading. These policies are up, we've talked about them in the past, the policy committee recommends their approval, so we need a motion to recommend the school board approve the following policies. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The next thing is our faculty and staff, the substitute pay rates, and we need a motion that we recommend the school board approve the changes to the rates of pay for substitute teachers effective August 21st. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I can start out with, we had some emails on the substitute pay rates that it didn't necessarily make sense, and so there were some discrepancies there, so Director Kaski was tasked with going back and taking a look at it, so we responded to the feedback that we got on emails that were received. And so Director Kaski, could you give us an update?
Sure. Chair Anderson, members of the board, Superintendent Almos, as you know, last time when I came forward and recommended changes to the substitute rates, we were looking at data from around surrounding districts and such, looking at our former three-year, three-tier system, which really was not working for us over the last couple of years in terms of attracting more substitutes and, and individuals picking up assignments. So we made a recommendation to change that to a rate of $180 for mid-weekdays, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and $210 on Mondays and Fridays, which are, are more difficult days to fill absences. Inadvertently, though, there were 75 substitutes at the highest rate in the former tier that we actually ended up reducing their weekly pay. So didn't mean to do it, we went back, took another look at it. We developed three scenarios around a different pay structure. The first was a 185 and 210 structure, again, focusing on Mondays and Fridays. That was a net zero for that group of the 75, it was still the same, $975 per week for them. We developed a second one at $190 for midweek, 210 for Monday and Friday. That is a net 15, so that goes up to $990. And there was a third scenario we did at 195 and 205, and that would be a net 20, or 200, or $995. Our focus as we were looking at this was to try to entice substitutes to pick up Mondays and Fridays. Those are our more difficult days to cover. And based on our data from last year, we thought it was more important to focus on those and have a higher rate on Mondays and Fridays versus Monday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So that is the recommendation we're putting before you today of changing those rates to now 190 days, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, 200, 200, $190, sorry, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, $210 on Mondays and Fridays, so.
Any questions for Director Kaski?
Yeah, I have a question, and I sent some, some of this in an earlier email, so I hope, I hope you had a little bit of time to look at it. So my concern here is that we're not really addressing the problem that has brought this back to the board, and the emails that we've received with those teachers who are at, at the max, making less money for working three of those days a week. So the way I was looking at this is, we had already set that higher rate for Monday, Friday, the days that we have more vacancies, because it's Monday, Friday, right? So even though there's three days a week at the lower rate, there's only, and two at the higher, there's more of those days, right? But we, we set that at 200, already higher, to attract more people. And from what I've heard, from the substitutes, is that's, so far, it's already working at 200. It's some of the best pay around us, and we're filling up those days first. It's just what I've heard from the sub-list. So I don't know that increasing that part is addressing the problem. I think the problem was, eventually, everyone's going to get to the top, right? Maybe, but in the old system, but now we're starting them out, but for those 75 teachers who were already at 195, we're still paying them 190. So it's still less for the majority, for those three middle days. So I was thinking, or my question too is, would it solve the problem to keep them equal at 195 net, so they're never taking a pay decrease? And instead of bumping that Monday, Friday up to 210, keep it at 200, which seems to be working, that seems like it would save the district money. I don't have the exact number, so I couldn't calculate it, but just, if everything was equal, you'd have to have one-third more Monday through Friday, so it'd be like 3,000 workdays that you'd have to have at that rate more on Monday, Friday, to cost us the money that was in there, if that makes sense. So simplified question, I, I see your head spin on the number. Let me, just, why, why do we not recommend just doing the 195, 200?
Well, it's a scenario we didn't run to start with. We did it at 195 and 205 to create a $10 gap between the two. We don't believe that $10 gap is going to be enough of incentive to pick up Mondays and Fridays. Again, that is, those are the two days in which we have the toughest time getting substitutes, and it makes sense. People want to take a three-day weekend, they want to take a four-day weekend. We want to entice them to do that, and by bringing it in at 210, we feel that we have a good shot at doing that. With regard to the substitutes that were already at the top, the only time that that would be a lesser rate is that they only worked Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. If they stick up a Monday, or they pick up a Friday, and pick up a, let's say they have five days, they take three. As long as they take a Monday or a Friday and two other days, they are making more money for them than that. And that's kind of how we have to look at it, balance the, trying to get the ends of the weekend covered versus not disadvantaging someone for the majority of it, yeah.
Thank you. If I recall, December and May are probably two of the months that you need subs the most on the Mondays and...
I mean, just, you know, some facts.
Yeah.
Last year, we averaged 109 absences a day. And so, we don't fill all those. We don't fill all those. We are running about an 80% fill rate. Our hope is, this will help raise that. When we can raise the fill rate, we reduce the number of teachers we have filling in on their prep time to cover, and it, to cover a day, an absent, it takes five teachers, because you got to cover five periods with it. So that's our hope.
Any other questions for Director Kaski?
I have a question. Did you look back this first week of school, at how many were unfilled?
Well, yeah, we're doing really good. We filled every one of them, but we've only had like, in fact, total absences with our paraprofessionals, we only had like 60 today, so. And some of those are just, whether it's illness or whatever it might be, that's where we were at. So first weeks are always really good. It's, as we get later on in the year, we will run into flu season and other things.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Director Kaski. Okay, there's been a motion made. I'm going to recuse myself from the vote, since I am a substitute teacher. I haven't subbed in a while, but I am.
I will be recusing myself as well. I've actually subbed four times this school year already.
So any discussion on this motion? There's no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Director Kaski. Well, it's time for our preliminary levy certification information. Mr. John Reagan, you're back up.
Mr. Chair Anderson, board members, Superintendent Almos, thank you for this opportunity. I just have to say, like, I didn't stand up here for months, and here I am twice. All right, we're going to talk about the 25 pay 26 levy. The levy is, man, is it fun, but we're going to work through what it is, like what the timeline for it is, what it, how it plays, and how it plays with school finances, each party's responsibilities, and who those parties are, and what's needed from you as the board as we work through this levy process. So what is the levy? It's the annual cycle to determine how much local property tax our school district can receive. It's a collaborative effort between our school district, the state, and the county. In our case, there's five counties that we deal with. We, our primary county is Sherburne County, so they are kind of like the head of the whole thing, and they play with all the other four counties. We're governed by Minnesota state law, ensuring fairness and accountability, so we can't just make up what we want when it comes to levy. It is dictated by what's in law and state statute. And it balances state aid with local property taxes, and we'll talk a little bit more about that coming up. So a school is funded by federal, state, and local taxes, and then we have this small amount of like revenue that we get locally. That would be when you go to the football game, you pay your, what is it, 10 bucks here? That's local revenue. Federal's a small amount, but the majority of our taxes come from, of our funding comes from state and local taxes. The levy process is about the local taxes, and the levy amount is the difference between the state aid and what the district is entitled to when it comes to funding. There's three categories in the levy. There's general fund, community service, and debt service. This, as Superintendent Almos already mentioned, our favorite word in the levy process, levy the maximum, which means to levy the allowed amount, the state law allocated for funding of education. Talk about taxes maximum is not one we'd like to roll out and say, look what we're doing. What it essentially is telling, or what you guys are working through is, we are levying what we are allocated to through state law. Okay, we're going to go through the timeframe and how this works. So we mentioned in the budget, we're always kind of dealing with three years. The levy is no different. So the levies are certified in the fall, they go to the taxpayers in the spring and the following fall, and the money comes to us in the fiscal year that starts in July. How's that for super easy? Basically, this fall, fall of '25, you guys are going to certify the levy. County's going to do its work, and we'll talk about that in a minute, and then May and October, homeowners are going to get their tax bills. That money starts showing up in our accounts July 1 of '26, and is paid through July, or June 30th of '27. So three years as we work through...
Three years as we work through it, three different places on how it works out. Okay, so what influences this levy calculation? I told you it's state law, right? That it plays out this way, but ultimately, there's some choices, and we'll deal with that in a little bit, too. But student enrollment's the major part. We had a hundred and fifty kids, we levy a lot less than the fifteen thousand we levy for. Everything's built on the number of students we have. The other thing that plays into it in a short amount is property wealth. So the more wealthy your district is, the more local tax ratios you're going to have to pay. And then state aid's the other half. So if we were a property poor district, we would pay less locally and more, we'd get more from the state. If we're the opposite, if we're wealthy, then we pay more, and the state pays less. But the state still pays a majority of the funding that comes in. Debt service, how much we have to pay off for bonds, so what's been approved by voters, and then what's been approved by the board, and then also voter and board-approved referendums, so directly increased funds for operations or projects. The three main players, we have the state, or MDE. State levy limits and funding formulas are set by the legislature. MDE calculates how much, what the maximal allowable levy for each district is, and then they also provide the state aid that matches along with that. The county's the other one. That's the auditor and the assessor. They determine the tax. They receive our levy certifications. They determine property tax values, and then they calculate individual tax bills. So they do a lot of the work on whether it goes up a lot for you or down for you. We do it when it comes to like the whole, whole district. And then the school district. We enter our local information, so again, we'll keep talking about this timeline stuff, but we enter some information like what our leases are, what bond payments are in there, different things that we enter in there. That creates the levy, or what that amount is. You guys as a board are going to adopt the proposed and the final levy amount. We hold a truth and tax, taxation public hea, hearing, and then we certi, you guys certify the levy to the county when you're done. So timelines, how does that all play out? So every spring, counties and state work to finalize what was paid previous year. So we put in what we think is going to happen for our students. They fix what actually happened. We put in place what we think is going to happen for a bunch of other things. And they say, well, bonds is the other one, right? So we put in what, they charge a hundred and five percent to the tax, and then if everybody pays their taxes, they give five percent back. If everybody didn't pay their taxes, then we have enough as a state to pay what we need to, or as a district to pay what we bond. So they work through all that, so when that levy comes out the next time, it's accurate for what was actually paid in. During the summer, MDE preve, prepares the primary levy limits. So legislature gets done with his work. They change the laws, sometimes a lot, like in twenty-three, sometimes not very much like last year, and then they set what it is, those formulas are that play out. August, mid-Aug, August, they open the system. It's not as exciting as it sounds, and we put in our ten to fifteen things that we actually have control over. September, you guys certify the proposed levy, which is the first step that you take. Then in the fall, we make sure everything's accurate as we go through it. So you can imagine the district or the state touches every bit of dollars that goes to a school district in the whole state. There are three hundred and thirty districts and numerous charter schools. They touch it all. Believe it or not, they have some errors, and we make sure that our errors are not there. So the money we're allocated is what we're supposed to get. Then late November into December, we have to hold the truth and taxation public hearing. Ours will be on December eighth. What that looks like is, here's the dollar amount where you're going to certify for the final levy. Here's what has influenced that amount, and just kind of a big picture of why the taxes are what they are. Then December eighth, because you, we only have one board meeting that takes place in December, you're going to certify that final levy, which is, which is an actual dollar amount. And that's what goes to the county for them to make up what it looks like on your tax statements. Where do we have control in this? So our budget, we obviously have control over that. We have control over the proposed levy amount. We're asking for max, because it allows for any errors that may take place, us to make sure that we aren't being held short. You have the final levy amount authority, and then throughout this process, previous, probably not during, there's voter and board-approved referendum decisions that affect that levy. So if you tomorrow decided you want to run a referendum, I don't even know if it's possible, you could run it in December. It wouldn't be on the levy, but it would show up on their tax bills as you work through it. So you guys have some choices in some of that stuff, just like your previous boards did. Next steps. This is a beautiful document. I used to say it's forty pages, because it was forty pages when I started, so bless the state, because they reduced it by one. It's now thirty-nine, and it is every formula, dollar, like it is our whole snapshot of our district, and that gets run. So tomorrow afternoon, we have a beautiful webinar or in-person meeting, if you choose to go to, where we're going to walk through every bit of it, what changes came from the state, and we'll make sure that all of our stuff is tied out the way it should. But we spend a lot of time looking at this document and running it. They run it once a day. So if they found an error today, tomorrow when we run the report, it's going to show a change. And every day, they run levy reports until we get to, into December. Okay, what we're asking from you guys as a board is that at the September meeting, the second September meeting, we're going to ask you to approve the levy, preliminary levy at the maximum amount. And again, a maximum is not anything more than you're approving it at what the state has allocated, is what we have for school funding. The reason you do it to the maximum is it allows for adjustments to be made before we get to that final levy, which is an actual dollar figure. I'm going to end it with like five things that I want to make sure that we talk about. We don't control market values. That is a county thing. So if your taxes or your house value went up by twenty percent, the district has no part in that. The levy formulas are set by state statute. The one that's easiest to talk about is CTE. We can levy thirty-five percent of certified programs for CTE or career in tech debt. If we value CTE, we can't levy more. We can't be like, we're at fifty percent, we love it. Or if we hate it, we can't be like, we're only going to levy five percent. The state says you get to levy thirty-five percent. Student, student enrollment, like I said before, is the biggest driver of levy calculations. Multiple years of tax adjustments are part of the levy amount, so we briefly talked about for bonds, we levy a hundred and five percent. When they get done with those tax reconciliations, they adjust your levy in the years going forward. And most levy categories are tied to state aid. If you want to learn more, we have more stuff on our school website. Same information presented a little bit different. Questions?
Any questions? Go ahead, Shane.
Thank you for that presentation, Corrigan. So to clarify, at next, or two-week special meeting, we would certify it at the max, and then we can bring it down to where it needs to be in December.
You can always bring it down.
Or we can't go up.
Cannot go up.
Okay. And we don't have the numbers yet. The state hasn't given them, even though we have to certify by what date?
So the numbers are there. It's whether they're going to be accurate at that moment that you guys do it at the September meeting.
Okay, so we have the numbers, but we don't know if they're accurate, which is why we're going to certify, and then let it go till December.
Yep.
Okay. And then, once we certify that, the counties implement that onto the taxes.
Correct.
And the mill rate, quote unquote, or however you want to say it, or the valuation of your home, is not set by the district at all?
No.
Thank you.
Questions for John?
I have one. So if we, if we didn't approve it at the maximum, we would be essentially leaving dollars that we could use from the state?
There's a pretty good chance.
Dollars on the table, okay.
Yeah, there are very few districts that under levy, and when they do, they often lose state aid as a, as a part of that, right? They have reasons for that, or they have strategies they're using with their financial planners, but very few, a very tiny percentage, would even do anything like that. The vast majority of districts will certify at the maximum, even at, even at certification time in December.
Any questions? Well, thank you, Director Reagan, for that. Moving on with the meeting, we're on the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Does anyone want to pull anything out of the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Just note the updates, dates coming up. Policy Committee is September fifteenth, and Director Steinbrecker's Facilities Committee on September sixteenth, because you mentioned October.
I'm sorry, September, yes.
Yes.
Yes, you're correct.
I was going to correct you back then, but I figured I could correct you now.
No, no, you're correct, September, yes.
And then our special meeting, work, work session will be September twenty-second. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Have a great night.